The phone case is like having...
... Somebody noticed the light beside us on, so I just wanted to let you know. And with that, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. If we could please stand for the pledge. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you and good evening and welcome to our January 13th Business Meeting of the Milford Board of Education. Can we have a roll call for attendance, please, Ms. Griffin?
Megan Doyle.
Here.
Scott Permender.
Present.
Tracy Irby.
Here.
Tom Kova.
Here.
Lauren Mallor.
Here.
Una Petrowski.
Petrowski's not in.
Christina Preie.
Here.
Mike Smith.
Present.
Cindy Wolf Boynton.
Present.
And Susan Glennon.
Present.
Nine members present.
Thank you. We have student reports next on our agenda. I think Foreign goes first this evening. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Luke and it's a pleasure to be with you tonight. And before we begin, we'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year and we're very excited to see all the amazing things we will achieve in our schools this year. So to begin, we wanted to thank all who donated to the Avery's Little Army Toy Drive post by Foreign in December. It was a great success. On December 17th, the choir orchestra band percussion ensemble and jazz band performed at the music department's winter concert. Thank you to our musicians for their hard work. It was a great performance. Foreign also hosted our annual Seniors for Seniors event for the holiday season where seniors took a big break from classes to make cards for senior citizens at a local rehabilitation center and enjoyed a visit from Santa. Foreign's interact club assisted the Milford Fire Department recently in organizing the toys collected for their Toys for Tots campaign. Thank you to the club and the fire department. Their work will benefit many members of our community. Moving on to sports, we wanted to extend our congratulations to Athleta of the Week Adriana Gonzalez. Within her first two track meets of the season, she broke two school records, the one and two mile, and she's broken a total of three school records in indoor track with the 600 meter being the third. Congratulations Adriana. The indoor track team also had a great showing at the Wesleyan University Invitational with athletes placing first in the four by 200 relay, long jump and shot putt. Recently, the Milford Mariners hockey team has been on a roll as well improving to a record of five, one and one recently with a big win over Chapog in which Daniel Vallée scored the game winner in front of an excited crowd. To round out sports, great job to our Foreign Boys basketball team for winning 65 to 58 against Xavier recently, improving the record to five wins and three losses. Both Jackson Staples and Jackson Doyle were standout players during the game, each scoring 15 points.
Moving on, there is a history and journalism field trip available for March 12th headed to the 9/11 museum and the Eldridge Museum as well as a dinner at Bubba Gump's and Great Gatsby on Broadway in New York City. This is an amazing opportunity for all history and journalism students. Earlier in December, Foreign's Giving Table Club prepared a taco bar large enough for two meals for a Milford Schools district planning. We are very appreciative of the dedication of our Giving Table who continues to work hard to help those in need. Coming up on Thursday, January 23rd from 6:30 to 8:00 is Foreign's yearly volleyball game funders with four of the Foreign faculty scholarship fund. We encourage anyone who can to join us and help raise money for the graduating class to continue their post-high school education. On the same topic, Foreign's School Counseling Office encourages seniors to visit the school counseling website and the office for a great list of scholarship opportunities that they can apply to. Off to some class news, the intradecalinary class recently cooked homemade pizza as well as participated in a no food waste lab where students prepared a dish on the spot using items that were expiring soon or leftovers. Foreign's AP Psychology class has been engaging in some fun activities such as learning the capacity of their own memories in the game Simon and applying Robert Sternberg's theory of intelligence with the cork in the bottle challenge. Foreign's Model UN class participated in Milford's third annual Model UN conference where 60 students represented a variety of countries and discussed issues such as biosecurity, Mediterranean migration and sustainable tourism. Good work, Delkies. Finally, students in the methods of teaching and learning class designed learning experiences incorporating holiday celebrations and culture for children at the Foreign Child Learning Center. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you all today and have a great rest of your evening.
Thank you. Now we have Jonathan Wa.
Happy New Year and good evening, board members. It is a pleasure to be with you once again. Hopefully, everyone has tried to stay warm with these extreme weather conditions. I will begin tonight with some lawmakers and news. Students had a safe and relaxing winter break and are excited to be back in the building. Midterm exams for all students start tomorrow and teachers have successfully prepared students. The SEL committee put on a delightful event to leave students with a mint spirit as they entered break. Students enjoy breakout rooms and different activities as well as a holiday pep rally with the students and faculty involved. The Drama Club is hosting a candy fundraiser to raise money for their spring show. In academics, all teachers in the math department have collaborated on a design for midterm exams and projects for students in various courses. They have also started placements for next school year with registration right around the corner. Our teachers also had the opportunity to run courses with teachers from the math department at Foreign to discuss how to further implement the mathmatic curriculum for next school year. The Advocate had another record-breaking month reviews during the month of December. And the National English Honor Society conducted their book drive and plans to donate the collected books to the Beth Bell Center later this month. This semester's Model UN classes closed this course with their MA conference at Parsons with classes from Foreign this past Thursday. Thank you to Mr. Rivenko for preparing students for this unforgettable experience.
In law sports action, there's a new school record for the girls' 1600 meters sprint relay. Congratulations Molly Crosses, Pallani Duise, Katia Haken and Avery Mullen. We are beyond proud of you all. Junior Avery Mullen also broke the record for the 600 meter. Congratulations Avery. In school counseling and college career, the TLC has several new passive programming activities available to students including Legos, Magna Tiles and Stick Together. Our help desk continues to thrive as students work to repair many broken Chromebooks. During midterms, the TLC becomes a quiet study space where students can study in peace or de-stress before or after their exams. Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you all and we look forward to the next meeting.
Thank you very much, students. Feel free to head out if you've got things to do while we carry out the rest of our meeting. Thank you for being here and we'll see you next month. Move on to public comment. Speakers may offer objective comments about school operations and programs. The board encourages speakers not to express personal complaints or defamatory comments about the Milford Board of Education personnel or any person associated with Milford Public Schools. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations and grievances will not be permitted. Consistent with the Federal Education Right to Privacy Act, discussion of students is prohibited absent parental waiver. Public comment does not allow for two-way conversation between speakers and the board. We welcome and appreciate your comments and opinions and will take them into consideration. Please note our meetings are televised and livestreamed on YouTube. We ask that you state your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes. Do you have any members of the public who'd like to address the board?
Good evening through you, Madam Chair and members of the board. My name is Andrew King. I reside at 32 Cedarhurst Lane. First, I would like to extend my sincere gratitude to this board for your tireless work. You dedicate your time and effort without compensation and the city of Milford truly appreciates your commitment. However, I stand before you this evening to ask you to extend that effort even further. I come to you both as a taxpayer and to speak up for many taxpayers across the city of Milford. As you know, Dr. Kataya will be presenting her budget tonight and I ask that you approach it with the diligence that it deserves. Take the time to thoroughly review that budget and ask tough questions. If something doesn't add up or doesn't make sense, then perhaps it has no place in that budget. But let me be clear, I am not solely here to advocate for cuts. What I'm asking for is fiscal responsibility. A commitment to ensuring that the taxpayers' money is being spent wisely and efficiently. We absolutely must prioritize the education of our children. But we also need to recognize that simply allocating a certain amount of money does not automatically guarantee a better education. Be vigilant in identifying areas where efficiencies can be made. Ask yourselves, is the money being spent, could it be better used elsewhere? Or in some cases, should it even be spent at all? For several years now, we have seen consecutive tax increases, most of which comes from the Board of Education's budget. The taxpayers of Milford cannot bear this burden indefinitely. I urge you to keep in mind the responsibility you all hold to us, so I am asking you to be vigilant stewards of the taxpayers' dollars entrusted to you. The voting taxpayers are trusting that you will look out for our best interests. Paying for everything should not count for nothing. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
And I'm Jalil, Forest MB, Roses Mill Road. Dr. Kataya, Ms. Rauteri, a member of the Milford Board of Education. Thank you for listening and working alongside us with such care and dedication. This process has been a profound learning experience for our students, teaching them the power of collaboration, the art of public speaking and the importance of community building. It beautifully reflects the excellence and heart of the Milford academic system. As Margaret Wheatley said, "There is no power for change greater than the community discovering what it cares about." For our community, the unwavering commitment to the well-being of every student, a value so thoughtfully reflected in the purpose and in the proposed calendar being voted on today. Thank you for making Milford a beacon of inclusivity, a place where all students are seen, valued and welcomed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else who'd like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comment. Move on to my chair's report. We begin our work this evening on the budget with Dr. Kataya's presentation, board members, and her proposal to us as a broad overview this evening. We have budget workshops planned for this Wednesday and Thursday, the 15th and 16th, and next Wednesday, the 22nd, when it's anticipated we will vote if ready. And then we're holding the Thursday, the 23rd in case we need an extra day for any reason. The workshops will allow us to take a deep look at the proposal and collaboration with administration to determine what the board will ultimately put forward to the city. All workshops will begin at 7:00 PM and will include a time for public comment. At the first two meetings, public comment is at the end after discussion. And if the last meeting or the night we will vote, public comment will occur before we actually vote. Members of the public can always email comments to the board as well. Just as a reminder, I ask that you submit questions in writing so administration can prepare complete responses. If you can get your initial questions to me by tomorrow morning, that would be helpful. It's understood that you'll have follow-up questions that might be answered as part of the discussion during the workshops, but additional questions that come up, please email them to me as soon as possible and we'll add them to the list. We will meet for a long-range facilities planning workshop on Monday, the 27th during our scheduled committee the whole time, 7:00 PM. And we'll unpack and discuss the community conversation that was held this past Saturday as well as next steps. I thought we had a good turnout on Saturday despite the light snow and there was lots of positive energy in the room. I hope you all felt the same way. I thought it went very well and looking forward to the 27th. If you have, you know, if you think of additional data that you think we should start collecting, please let me know so we can forward that along to the team to get working on it. I want to again thank all of the Milford Public Schools staff who contributed to the event. It was a lot of work. We had teachers, central office personnel, custodians, food services, tech and security folks, childcare helpers and of course, the board members who were able to be there. Thank you so much. Ms. Preet, Ms. Doyle, Ms. Irby, Mr. Kova, Ms. Mallor and Mr. Smith. Feel free to share your impressions during the board comment tonight. And lastly, I do want to inform you that I have unfortunately received a resignation from Ms. Petrowski due to personal reasons effective immediately. That's why she's not here this evening. I want to thank Una for her six years of service as a board member and wish her well. In accordance with our governance, a replacement will be nominated by the third district and voted on by the board at a future business meeting. Do we have any liaison reports tonight? None? Okay. We'll move on to superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Glennon. With your permission, I'd like to reorder the agenda and... No? We're not, sorry. I take that back. We're not going to reorder.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to go on to Dr. Kataya's superintendent's report for budget presentation. Well, if board members would like to entertain that, go right, we can. If you'd like to entertain changing the agenda, reordering the agenda, somebody can make a motion.
I'd like to open the agenda to reorder it so we can consider the calendar before the superintendent's pleasure presentation.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. Sorry, we will do the calendar first?
I'll just wait here if that's okay.
We have a motion, Ms. Muzbouq.
Yes, a motion that the Milford Board of Education approves the Milford Public Schools 2025-2026 academic calendar as presented.
Is there a second?
Second, uh...
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Yes, very quickly, point of just discussion, again, reiterating, thanks to Dr. Kataya and team for adjusting the calendar this year. It takes into account a few priorities that I think are very important that this board supports, both the addition of Eid as a holiday on the calendar. I'm honored to have the opportunity to vote for that and I think it's an important addition and new welcome change to our school calendar. And I'm also grateful for the adjustment that was made to the distribution of professional development days throughout the year. I know a lot of families were some concerned with the calendar and the way it has been flowing for the last couple of years. So we appreciate the fact that there will be fewer disruptions throughout the year for our students and additional time periods of extended five-day weeks for learning along the way. And I think those two changes are very welcome and we are very much looking forward to, on behalf of the families I know who very much appreciate both of those ads, looking forward to as a community moving into this new calendar. So thank you for listening to us as we raise those concerns over time and for putting this calendar up here for us to vote on tonight.
Yes, Mr. Smith?
Yeah, and just real quick, I very, there are a few things that make me excited to sit on this side of the table as seeing a room full of community residents. So really excited to have you guys all here and very much appreciate the opportunity of this Saturday, which was great community participation and tonight, seeing this room full of people who care about our schools and our community and really excited to vote on this. So thank you very much.
Okay. Any other comments from board members? We see none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. So this becomes our academic calendar for the next school year. And with that, go ahead.
I'd like to take a moment of privilege if I may, Ms. Glennon.
Certainly. I know I've had an opportunity to speak with this incredible community many times before, but I'd like for public record to address this community and extend a heartfelt gratitude to each and every one of you. Margaret Wheatley is one of my favorite researchers, writers, authors, consultants, and she does a lot and speaks a lot about how despite differences, a community can come together under compassionate and empathetic leadership. That differences won't divide that community and I believe you extended compassion to Ms. Rauteri and I as we learned more about you and what made us more similar than different. And honoring this community in our calendar is only a very, very small expression of what we want to really do for the entire school community. So that every child finds a place of belonging in our schools and in our classrooms. So thank you for working with us and I'm hoping that this is only the beginning of our work to better come together, closer community. So thank you.
And thank you for supporting us.
So take your children home, please. Or you can stay for the budget.
I think it was worth the change in agenda. There are goodies coming.
Which we're fully unaware of. Yeah, exactly.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, which one?
Thank you so very much. Sorry, I took two. I don't even want.
Thank you.
So sweet. Thank you so much.
So nice. Thank you.
Yeah, that is... That is a very strong child. It's not an easy thing to do what she's doing. That is very impressive.
So thank you for entertaining that accommodation. Feel so far away. So thank you, board. I appreciate any time I can talk to you about what our plans are for our young people and our staff. More critically, a couple of times a year, we get to talk about what those resources are that we need to continue the good work in the public schools. And this is my sixth budget, I think, with you, my seventh year. Might be my seventh budget, if you want to do the math. My first one was the 1920 budget. And each one, while there are similar goals and similar aspirations for outcomes, each one takes on a different character of its own. It is interesting. It's the same 14 schools and primarily similar staff and kids come through, but each budget feels a little different. And one would anticipate that. The influencing factors, the children that are in our classrooms are changing, the impact of what's happening in our society. And I think you will sense that, particularly those, all of you have been through more than one budget cycle now, right? You're no longer, was that maybe one of your first tasks as a board member last year for some of you? And I think you may sense the difference. Before you is a budget built similar to all other budgets under my leadership. We start at zero. We roll everybody back and we say, so based on the students in front of you and the current needs of our young people and staff, what do we need to support them? And as I mentioned, the community conversation on Saturday, to the extent possible, we always put our young people in front of us when we're building a budget, making decisions, period, but in for tonight's topic, building a budget. I started with this slide with intention. It's because it represents three different phases of our young people's experience with us. On the left, there's a picture of our preschoolers, our youngest of students. These are our three and four-year-olds. And please note that if our young people start with us at the age of three, they have the potential of spending 20 years with us. Because under federal law, we provide educational services with students with disabilities through the age of 23. And the picture on the right demonstrates one of our Parsons Perks kids. Who, I'm not sure about her individual story, but possibly could have been with us for 20 years. And then in the middle, some of our middle schoolers who are still trying to figure out, are they closer to the... out, are they closer to the three-year-old maturity level or the 23-year-old maturity level? And I think it just, that answer depends on the day for those of us or those of you who have middle schoolers. But please know that we have the incredible opportunity of impacting lives for a span of years, whether they they are with us through 18 as a 12th grader, or starting with us at three, which not all of them do, many and most start with us at age of five. So please know that in every dialogue, we have kids here, right in front of us, and I'm going to ask that you do the same. I'm not going to assume that you do that and haven't done that. I'm just going to ask that we keep kids in at the forefront of our conversation as we go through this budget. In addition to having children at the forefront of our conversation, every time we talk about future plans, we are regularly referring to what is the vision for every single learner, regardless of age, regardless of ability, disability, regardless of school location. We have a vision for every single child that is right now in that vision of a learner. We base our school system and honor the relationships between adults, among adults, between adults and children, and between children. We invest in what we believe is research-based, the best instructional practices. We've called out from the research and have identified what do we want instruction to look like in 491 classrooms. And finally, more recently, we've made a call to action to ensure equitable access, experiences, and outcomes for all children. These four guiding documents are always in our background. You may ask, how is a budget developed? It starts with what the board sets out for us in a mission, a vision, commitments, and goals. We take those four documents. We flesh out what the priorities are over a series of years. Just like in your own personal life, at home, you can't do everything in one year. You have to identify priorities based on the needs in front of you. And from that, we identify what programs, initiatives that we would like to focus on for the coming year, and then identify those resources necessary to support that. As a reminder, we include here in the presentation the commitments adopted by the Board of Education in May of 2021. There are nine commitments that categorically speak to us who work in the system that say, this is what we want you to focus on. Make these your priorities, the guard lit, guardrails. These goals that were adopted in May of '21 directly aligned to our vision of the learner. Word for word, this is the vision for every child. These are your goals. In October of '24, this board had a discussion and adopted these priorities. To the best of our ability within our means, we align the budget proposal in front of you to these priorities. And in 2024, October 2024, with our team, we do our very best to forecast what the economic environment will look like, and what we anticipate are some of those costs facing us. If you recall, these are the assumptions you adopted just a few months ago, spanning everywhere from the higher inflation, impact of minimum wage increases, increases in legal fees. I'm not going to read all this line by line. You've already reviewed these. Anticipated insurance increases, utilities, special education, contract renewal increases. These are all things, if you were to have a crystal ball, if you will, this is what we thought we would be looking at in October. And to a certain, a large degree, a lot of that has come true. If you've spent time reviewing the budget over the last couple of days, you would have seen. But before we look forward, let's take a look at what we've been able to accomplish with the resources provided to us to date. We are so glad. One of the best days of the school year is the first day of school, and the second best for us is graduation. And we are so proud of the accomplishments of our young people. We had 402 students graduate, crossed the stage, and 160 of those students graduating with honors. Eighty-seven percent going on to four-year college, and we've talked a lot about ensuring that every child selects a path that is right for them. And with the career pathways and the industry standard demands of 2025 and beyond, college isn't always the right choice for every single child, so we ensure that every child makes that decision that's right for him or her. Our graduates demonstrate to us the experiences they are having in our classrooms, and to a great degree, highly successful experiences. To include, but not limited to, success on advanced placement. 140 students named, 140 students named AP Scholars. You'll see the layout there, AP Scholars, Scholars with Honor, and Scholars with Distinction. In Milford Public Schools, we have an open access philosophy for advanced placement. We don't place a lot of requirements. If a student wants to try to take advanced placement, we let them. With the investment of the budget that was passed for '24, '25, this board, this community supported the summer athletics program. For the first time this year, our athletes were able to train and practice, because if you remember, CIAC rules changed. The budget allowed our athletes to remain competitive with other teams by being given the opportunity to come in over the summer. Your, the budget that was approved supported many new musical instruments. We changed some of the assemblies and concert structures this year to allow our musicians to experience more professional concert by coming here to Parsons. If you came to an elementary concert, you would have seen that. The ASL class at the middle school is a huge hit, so much so that we believe we may need to add a section, therefore needing more staffing for the coming year. And esports, well, I don't know. I think we should brag a little bit. First year out as a team, competitive team, top four in the state of Connecticut. Go esports. I don't think I could say go law, because, but it is law team. But we are proud of both of our teams. With the investment, we've been able to partner with universities to strengthen the pipeline of young people who may want to enter the teaching field and already establishing a relationship with them to say, hey, come teach at Milford when you're done, way before they cross that graduation stage. We've invested in literacy. We've created great strides in the area of the Right to Read Act, made a decision, and we are starting implementation as we speak in many of the components of the five areas of the science of reading. This budget that was passed is, has invested in middle school tech ed and has boasted and supported further our preschool program. And our masterclass, season five, was held over the summer with at least 100 teachers participating in our HQI live experience. Teachers just continue to provide us feedback on it being one of the best professional learning experiences of their entire career. Teachers come back on year after year. The budget of '24, '25 also helps support many renovations throughout the district, many, many that were shared with you earlier in the year by Mr. Bradbury, projects that occurred over the summer, cleaning, safety upgrades. As a reminder of the scope of our work, we have 1.1 million square feet of building space, 179 acres of grounds to keep, and 486, I think that's 491, but somewhere between 486 and 491 classrooms that we maintain. Some are projects, including everywhere from resurfacing tennis courts, the exterior of our buildings and grounds, to the interior, like new flooring, still with old desks, but with new flooring. Just a reminder of the scope again, we transport about 3,694 students a day to and from school. And in last year, in 23, '24, we served almost 700,000 meals to our young people. So this is no small business. This is no small organization. And we can't do the work without our significant partners by our side. While this slide does not represent all of our partners, most certainly, they are representation of the critical people in our community that we need to work with to serve our students and our staff. So looking forward to the '25, '26 budget. The proposed budget in front of you amounts to $115,304,923, which represents a 4.87% increase over last year's adopted budget. So before we dive into the specifics of this, I just want to create a backdrop for what led us to that amount and a backdrop for some of the sacrifices that we made to get to that amount, actually. So this budget in front of you really demonstrates what is trending across the nation, across our state, and in our city. And what is trending is significant inflation rates, significant impact on regular household everyday operating costs that you're likely feeling at home, and we most certainly, as a school system, are not immune to that impact. In fact, in a, and I'm no economist by any means, but anyone such as myself can Google what are inflation rates? What is the state of the economy in this, in the state of Connecticut or Milford of the nation? So in my amateur economic Googling adventure, I found that the current inflation rate, and it was calculated through the end of November of '24, so does not take into account December or January. The inflation rate through November 2024 for the year of '24 was at 2.7%. And I wondered, like, did that feel high or low? So I did, extended my search and asked for it to go back 10 years. And of course, during the pandemic, inflation rates were between 6 and 7%. It was outrageous. We all, we were all there, remember that. But while I was not in Milford, 10 years ago, in 2014, the inflation rate was only 0.8%. 0.8% was significantly different than the 2.7 before us. And there is a level of uncertainty as to what will happen in 2025. So this budget that's before you actually won't be used until well halfway through 2025, so we're still in a crystal ball phase. In fact, if you do some research on CPI, Consumer Price Index, they give you a breakdown of the various costs that are going up in in our economy. Food alone has gone up 2.4% in 2024. Utility is 2.8% and transportation, 7.1%. So when I'm asked by citizens of the city of Milford, are you coming in flat this year, Dr. Kataya? That answer is no. And as long as inflation hits a school system like it does a home, and as long as a school system's budget is 77% made up of salaries and benefits, it most certainly will be no, we're not coming in flat. Because I will tell you, I've been asked that question about three times in the last two weeks. But this is what I can assure you, is that despite the operational impact on the proposed budget in front of you, we are committed to the goals that we just reviewed for every single child and staff member. We are committed to moving forward. While this budget doesn't propose anything flashy and cool and new, this budget does propose moving forward and continuing good work for kids and staff members. Because remember, the adults in front of our kids are our greatest investment in kids. Our adults that run the system, provide leadership in curriculum, instruction, and assessment, that's our greatest investment in our students, because education is a human, capital-driven industry. It's because of the people, that our young people, our little ones, will learn better or achieve greater things. So as I go through the drivers, you won't hear cool things from like the past. There isn't a new elementary STEM lab. And in fact, if you look deeply, there are no new musical instruments in this budget for the first time in seven years. We're putting a pause on that. We're putting a pause on like cool tech ed kind of stuff, with the exception of some absolutely needed things like graphic calculators. We're putting a pause because our operational costs are proving to be so challenging. But I want this board and the community to hear us. We are continuing to move forward. It doesn't mean we are taking steps backward. We're continuing to do good things. I'm the, we, we have chosen not to put anything cool and big and shiny in front of you, because we are trying to be, as someone said this evening already, fiscally responsible. We have already done the work of looking at what's necessary, what's not necessary. Of course, you have that job, too. And we can have that dialogue. On what would the impact be if we don't receive 4.87% increase? Should be a big part of the conversation as we go through this. Because we lean is probably too generous, generous of a word, actually. It's a skinny, skinny budget on the teaching and learning side. So let's move on to the drivers. Like I said, we are a human capital-driven industry. We need people to do the job. So 77% of our budget is salaries and benefits. The increase in all salary, all salary and benefit lines amounts to $2.9 million, which represents 2.68%. So I'm going to pause there for a minute. If we did nothing new, our contractual obligations for the people we pay is a 2.68% increase. And you'll see, there are fewer FTEs in this budget, by the way. So we're not adding new counselors this year. We are adding more ASL, but it's a swap of a reduction in that line, so it's a wash. And we'll get to that in a minute. Because the teachers' group is the largest group, we usually also focus on what that year's increase is. So contractually, the teacher's contract, oh, that's redundant, sorry. Contractually, that bargaining unit's increase is $1.3 million. It's the largest group of employees we have. Now, on page Roman numeral 16 of your budget book, while you don't need to go there now, I would encourage you to do some close analysis of that, and we can do that together on Wednesday night if you'd like. We can walk through that. You will notice the impact of the reduction of some grants, and I am going to jump to that part of the slide. I know it's not linear for any of you that want to follow linearly. But we are currently experiencing the reduction of federal entitlement grants. And mostly, on a grant, you'll have some staffing, okay? Well, when those grants are reduced, you have a couple of things, a couple of choices to make. You reduce that staffing, therefore eliminating that position, eliminating that service. And again, go, excuse me, we can go through that line by line on Wednesday. Or you move the funding source. Or you move the funding source. So for some of the positions, like you'll see on Roman numeral 16 page, we have some special ed paraprofessionals, special ed teachers, a couple of regular ed. They may look like an addition, but hear me clearly, they are not an addition, it's not a new position, it's just a change of funding source. Okay? What you'll also see is a couple of positions reduced because those were taken as efficiencies. We knew developmentally, there may be some positions, namely district teacher leader positions, that because of where we are with implementation of curriculum, we could cycle some of those out, but also because it's a tough budget year. And we took a look at every level, including district level. And you'll also see a change in staffing on Roman numeral 16 because of enrollment, like we do every single year. We visit our class guidelines and we ask, where did the numbers fall? We do an analysis of those numbers every year. And you'll see an increase in elementary staffing and you'll see a decrease in middle school and high school staffing numbers. Okay? With all of that said, with the net on page Roman numeral 16, we're still looking at a 2.68% increase in salaries and benefits alone. Okay? I'm trying to make that as clear as possible, but I realize this board may have questions Wednesday night. That will be helpful if you were to get those to Ms. Glennon by tomorrow so we can prepare any detailed responses when it comes to salaries, okay? I'm going to move on to other parts of the drivers in a more linear fashion. I'm going to go to right to read. We've been talking about this a lot. And so here's the good news. We used a very teacher-friendly process where teachers felt very engaged and voices were heard. We allowed teachers to pilot programs, get together and go visit classrooms, get together and meet with administration after school, provide feedback. And we believe we made the best informed decision on how to move forward to implement the science of reading. And for those of you who remember, we were predicting like a $1.2 million number with the use of some grants that we applied for to the state, with the use of current funding, and because we ended up with a program that wasn't the very expensive one, we're looking at about a $346,000 impact in our budget. And it's a good program and will provide great literacy learning for our young people. And we're already seeing the response and our young people and our staff are bragging about it. Now, I will remind you that this is a unfunded primarily mandate. We're not one of those cities that gets a lot of money because of our poverty level. We did get some, but nowhere close to what we needed. I also want to point out, while this is not crystal clear, Ms. Autieri and his team, the teaching and learning supervisors and coaches, will be taking on some of the training in-house to save money. And that's what you can do when you have people on the ground here in the district. We're not hiring the person that comes from Arizona and they're charging us $5,000 a day. I'm making that number up, but it's not too far from the truth. And they're going to come for two days and leave. They are people who are in our district and know us. We saved money, while you won't see that line item in there as a savings. We took out what was proposed for professional development. I said to Steve, is there any way we can do this? He went to the team and they said, absolutely, we will take that on. In the employee benefits line, talk about a kick to the stomach when we started talking about this. It's almost a $700,000 impact, the increases we are seeing in life insurance, health insurance for retirees and workers comp. Folks, we can't not do that. You can't say, no, thank you. That is almost a $700,000 non-negotiable increase that doesn't allow you to come in flat. In the area of specialized programming, the needs of our kids is growing. Pick up any newspaper, any education journal, you see special ed on the rise, our kids are not regulating mental health, learning disabilities, autism. And we are choosing in district to handle that by specialized programming. The nice thing here is we, Ms. Stewart and her team took a look at all of our programming from elementary and middle to high. We'll be shifting some of the programming around. Where numbers are getting lower, we're going to take away. Where numbers are getting higher, we'll move over. The need here is not FTEs in teachers, but FTEs in Paris to support the individual students. So that $75,000 is Paris. Transportation has been a topic we've talked about a long time. Our artificially low contract with Durham came up for renegotiation. Good news, out of the $1.4 million increase in this line, the breakdown is the $700,000 about is related to that regular ed transportation renewal of contract. But remember, we are expecting that to be higher in the first year. It came in lower at 702,997. So the $1.4 million transportation increase is made up of contract renewal of 702 and then the other 728 is made up of increases on the special ed side. Once again, we can't say no, thank you to that. Special education in general, tuition and contracted services is going up by about And then in the area of utilities and contracted maintenance, we're looking at 239,000 of an increase. Again, board members, we can go into greater detail if you have questions about exactly what does that mean on utilities, contracted maintenance, et cetera. So typically in my letter, I take time to enumerate the system improvements, those shiny things I was talking about a minute ago. So what I chose to do in my communication to this board and the community is instead reiterate our commitment to the priorities that the board identified in October. We are committed in this budget, the $115 million, if it is allocated to us, is a commitment to core instruction. It is a commitment to supporting our adults through professional learning. It is a commitment to wellness. It is a commitment to our department that primarily focuses on the needs and support of adults. It's a commitment to class sizes and physical learning spaces, safety and security, and all those other things outside of a school day that help our kids feel like they belong somewhere. Those things still continue. There is one thing that is exceptionally difficult to address in such a budget, though, and that is our grounds and facilities, buildings and grounds. I will say that this budget does not meet the needs of our facilities, our infrastructure. We felt that there was already such a strain on the operational side and that the board is in the process of developing a long-range facilities plan, that we would slow down and in some cases, delay projects. Now, you know, most of you know, that Mr. Bradbury always has a very long list of projects and usually asks for what aren't we doing? And we send you the spreadsheet and it's millions of dollars. I would say that the grounds and building lines are probably the ones that have struggled the most over the last few years, particularly since we shifted to what I believe is a healthy budgeting model by going to zero-based budgeting. There is less money at the end of the year. There's less money in May that would normally have been redistributed to the facility lines. So not only are we not transferring money, end-of-year spending, to the facilities department, we're also underfunding what is being budgeted for. It's a little bit of a double whammy. I'm happy to discuss that further with you, but I think you will see that in those line items, that they are significantly lower. I also wanted to point out to you, every object code that we believe we were able to make a reduction that makes this, whatever adjective, and Mr. Brennan refuses to give me eye contact at this point, because he sweats every time we talk about how lean this is. So we did go in and look at and shave $645,000 of line items that were higher in this year's budget compared to what's being proposed to you. So it's a very skinny, lean, fill-in-the-blank adjective. So you will see that we did our due diligence. We took on the responsibility of fiscal efficiencies and looked at every object code as demonstrated here. This gives you a historical perspective of where budget proposals and requests and actual allocations have been over the last few years. This gives you a visual representation of how by category the budget is laid out. This gives you the visual pie chart to show the majority of the budget being in benefits and salaries. And then same information in a chart format is here. You'll see how we derived categorically to the budget that is in front of you. And then finally, just a reminder that all of that, again, is deeply steeped in what the priorities of this district are. So I'm happy to take any questions at this time or just actually, Ms. Glennon, you get all the questions after tonight, right? And then we'll discuss on Wednesday.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
So thank you, Dr. Katia, for the sort of view of the budget. So again, board members, as has been our practice for a long, long time, if you could submit your questions in writing so that administration can prepare responses. And again, as we go through the discussion over the next few budget workshops, certainly there may be clarifying questions that you need to ask. Those can be asked and potentially answered during the workshop if possible. They might have to get back to us with a response that they need to do some research. And then any additional questions that come up in the course of the conversations or as afterthoughts, you send them along to me when they come up, then we can add them to the list of questions.
Yeah, and we really do prefer questions ahead of time. It diminishes the risk of us being incorrect when being put on the spot. So we do want to do our due diligence and be accurate in the information we provide you. It's a great decision you need to make, okay? Thank you so much for listening and we look forward to the dialogue.
Thank you.
Just going to kick things over to Ms. Kapazna for our TMD report.
Thank you very much. Nothing earth-shattering in my report this month, but as always, you have the listing of job postings, personnel recommendations, retirements, resignations, terminations, and stipend appointments. I do want to point out that we are up to six retirements. Sorry, make that seven. One person who's leaving mid-year and six who are leaving at the end of June. So I just want to give you a price for that.
Questions for Ms. Kapazna? Ms. Kapazna, do you know, off the top of your head you might not, but are the retirements a mix of grade levels, like elementary, middle, high?
Actually, I do know of that because I wrote their names down. We have a special educator at the middle school, elementary teacher, elementary teacher, middle school teacher, special ed teacher, and a speech language.
Okay. Apologies, sorry. Any questions from Ms. Kapazna on the TMD report?
Okay, thank you. And we'll kick things over to Mr. Brennan for the next two items, the quarterly budget report and the disbursement report.
Thank you, Dr. Katia, Ms. Glennon, members of the board. In your package, you will see the listing of our quarterly budget report. As the board is aware, due to your policy governance, we review this officially once a quarter. But I wanted to assure you that we are constantly monitoring this weekly, if not daily. And as any issues arise, we will address those as they come up to make sure that we are end of the year with a solid budget. At this time, I'm going to highlight some items in this budget, in this different report for you guys that I wanted to just mention. And although we do not have any major concerns at this time, we'll continue to monitor closely. Just one quick reminder for this report, in the final column there, you'll see a number that says percent used. I just wanted to highlight once again that this is the total that's expended and the total that's encumbered, those two together. So seeing something that's in the 99% range at this time is not cause for alarm because it takes into account things that we have spent and also things that we know we are going to spend. Another common theme that you're going to see throughout this report as I'm going through and highlighting things are a lot of these areas that are over budget are directly related to things that apply to student needs. So you're going to see a common theme here this evening that these specific line items, the ones that I want to address tonight, are ones that are all related to things that have student issues or student needs that arise throughout the year. With that being said, I want to go through a few of these different accounts. The first one that I would like to talk about this evening is account 1112, Homebound Tutor. This account covers the cost for certified teachers employed to work with students. These are students who are unable to attend school due to various medical or physical-related problems, and it also covers the expenses for educating some of our expelled students. Account 1123, our hourly aides, this account is primarily over budget due to the need for para subs. We could need para subs for a variety of reasons. Maybe it arises from a para being out sick or a para that is on medical leave, or it could also be for student issues or needs that arise throughout the year and us needing to address those with an immediate need of hiring a para at that moment. Account 3235, which is other pupil personnel services, so this account covers a variety of pupil personnel services-related needs. When students have needs that are required by their IP or 504, we need to provide them. This account covers things such as one-to-one nurses for medically fragile students. It could also cover special speech and language pathology or visually impaired consultants or providers that we are needing to hire. And it also accounts for interpreters for PPTs and PPT4D if we need to hire interpretation services. Count 3202, that's, or 3202 is legal services. This one, as has been the trend in recent years, as we have seen, we have had a number of student issues and staff issues that require legal counsel, and as a result, this account is over budget. Count 5100, our regular transportation. So I just want to remind the board that this regular transportation also takes into account homeless transportation, which we have seen in recent years to be on the rise, which accounts for most of that deficit in that account. For these next couple sections here, the 5101, 5102, 5103 are transportation accounts there. Those ones are, we're not alarmed by those overages at this point. As the board is aware, we are eligible for reimbursement through the excess cost grant, and we expect a good portion of this will be covered by that amount. But once again, 5101, 5102, 5103, those are based on student needs, which we have seen as a rise in recent years. And that dovetails right into 5600, 5601, special ed tuition, very similarly. As issues arise, we need to provide our students with the educational setting that they need, and this account is also over budget at this time based on student need. And these accounts are also eligible for that excess cost reimbursement. Account 5109, going back just a little bit, just to hover between those two, transportation for special ed aides, very similarly. When a need arises for a special ed student on transportation, we need to provide whatever that student needs in order to make sure that they are successfully being transported to and from school, and that's where that account comes from. And as a need of student, and as based on student need, that account is currently over budget. And just as a final remark down at the bottom where it says general fund, we're currently at approximately 97.94% used, which is the total encumbered and the total expended at this point. This is a perfectly normal place to be at this time, and even though we do not have any immediate concerns, we will continue to monitor our budget data. And even though we do not have any immediate concerns, we will continue to monitor our budget data. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Questions for Ms. Dore Brennan? Ms. Erbe?
Thank you. On the homeless transportation, I think you explained that to us once, what that was.
Yes.
Was it not in Milford?
Yes, so in Milford. And depending upon where the student's nexus is, depends on who is going to be paying for that transportation. But if a student is determined to be, if we are the nexus for that student and the student is in a different area, we need to provide transportation for that student. Which could be.
Into Milford for them, okay.
Other questions for Mr. Brennan?
And those kind of, and just one more point to that. Those, those needs could come at middle of the year, beginning of the year. It could come at any point during the year. So it's, it's hard to kind of account for some of those changes. A family may move in and we need to address that need. So that could come up at any time and account for being over budget in that area.
Other questions for Mr. Brennan?
The fifty one oh nine?
Yes.
The special aid?
Yes.
The special ed aides, is that also subject to the reimbursement potentially? Like the ones, the?
I don't believe so, but Mrs. Stewart, am I correct in assuming that it's not?
It's not.
It's not?
It's not.
Am I correct that the special ed excess cost grant does not always cover a hundred percent of the shortfall, correct?
Correct, that's correct.
It's a finite amount of money?
I guess.
Yeah. Other questions? I know you answered most of mine in your conversation, so. Other questions?
Mr. Koba?
General question. Overall, are you like similar position that we were last year at this time?
That's a great question. At this time last year, we were actually at about eight hundred and eighty-two thousand left in the account. So I would say at this point, when you compare apples to apples from last year to this year, we were actually in a little bit of a better spot.
Thanks.
Mr. Fermenter?
I have one more question.
Sure.
Account six thousand, what is a freeze account?
So the freeze account, that's one that we, so last year, as a result of some of those costs that we have seen here, legal services, special ed tuition, transportation, those costs come up throughout the year. So at the, I believe it was in February of last year, we did a freeze of our accounts in order to make sure that we had the money to offset some of those expenditures in the year. So this year, and then when you do that in the middle of the year, that could put some strain at a school building. So one of the things that we did this year was to intentionally do a budget set aside at the beginning of the year in July for all of our schools and our departments so that they can intentionally plan for what that cost coming away from would be. So for example, at the beginning of the year in July, we said we're going to take ten percent of your budget and put it as a budget set aside. In the event that some of these unforeseen costs that come up and arise throughout the year cause us to go into the red further than what we have to pay for that, we would need to utilize that. So as of right now, we have that money set aside in that freeze account, which is the six thousand account.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Brennan.
Thank you. Moving on to our next report. In your package, you will find a list of all the cash dispersions from March to December over the amount of fifteen hundred dollars. At this time, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have on that report.
Mind that I have to have one question. And questions from board members, if you have one. On the second line, on the second page of the report, RNE Realty Associates Limited, monthly rental fees, I think you've already told us this once, but can you refresh my memory what this is for?
Sure, I'm just trying to find where you are.
The second page of the report, second line from the title.
Oh, okay. Yes, this is for the warehouse facility that we currently have.
That's what I thought.
As a reminder of the trailers now.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Fermenter?
Sorry.
Okay.
The retainer fee, account thirty three oh two?
Yes.
We pay that retainer, do they usually use all of that or do we get any of that back?
And more?
And more, we do not get any of that back. And that is a quarterly fee that we pay to retain their.
That's a minimum, and then we end up coming up at the end of the year with additional.
That is correct, yeah. That, that thirty thousand, I believe that's what it is.
We always have.
Thirty thousand is used and then?
And then some.
And then some.
And for what? Is that any particular type of legal services? I mean, is it, is that contract negotiations? Is that some of the, for lack of a better word, some of the student trouble or?
Yeah, it could be for a number of services. So that, that retainer fee goes to our attorneys, the attorney firm that we utilize. And that allows us to go to them for any.
That's everything, okay.
And then at, at certain times, we may require additional services outside of that.
Thank you.
Smaller?
On the same line there where it says it's the retainer fee three or four, does that mean we pay that retainer fee four times during the year? So it's not actually quarterly?
Quarterly, yes.
Other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Brennan. That completes Mr. Fermenter's report. Thank you, Dr. Khatia. We move on to consent agenda, Ms. Wolf Whiten, your motion?
Motion that the North Court of Education approves consent agenda items, the minutes for consideration, December ninth, twenty twenty-four business meeting, and the December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four special meeting.
Your second?
Second, that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Fourth comment? Mr. Smith?
Just, and I'll certainly submit questions on the budget in writing, but I didn't feel like this necessitated written thing. I was just very surprised and impressed on the slide twenty-four when you have a quote from GSP, which I assume is St. George, St. Pierre, that I'm familiar with from welterweight and middleweight championship from U S C fighting. So I just appreciate that.
Of course it is, yeah.
I was partially curious about who was the other GSP fan and who created the PowerPoint deck. Because I was like, oh, oh, I know they're quoting another person. So didn't expect to see you tonight, but I appreciate it, so.
Thank you.
Ms. Duell?
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all Dr. Khatia, Ms. Artiri, everyone, everyone on staff who helped on Saturday facilitate the conversation that we had, the community conversation. It was great to see such a wide turnout. People who we not normally would see, young, old, everyone within the community with various ties. And it's heartening to see that so many people care about what we're doing and where we're going. And it's helpful to demonstrate that we are doing our due diligence, that we are spending the time and having the hard conversations and really thinking about where we can move the district forward in the, in line with our goals. And so thank you for that and look forward to continuing that conversation. And generally, thanks for the budget work again. We'll have questions later in the day.
Ms. Bree?
Also following up on Ms. Glennon, your sentiments. And just to reiterate about Saturday, again, it was, it was just nice to see the various constituents come out. I, you know, we introduce ourselves and many of us are, you know, longstanding, if not Milford-born, but it was really nice to hear from maybe someone who's been here six months and nine years because, you know, to eight, nine years. And so they're relatively new, but they had so much to contribute. They understood where maybe the lifers were coming from. But at the same time, we learned more about what they like about Milford. And it was just a very open, very, it was a nice conversation. When we got to the four boards for common ground and disagreements and questions and next steps, there weren't a lot of disagreements. It was just such a nice conversation. And the presentations at the end, also a lot of themes ran through. And I think they were also, and they said so, just the group very appreciative of us offering, which was always the intention, us offering them to be a part of the conversation and keep it going. So it was just a good day all around, I thought. And I've also gotten great feedback from those I spoke with and attended.
Any other, Ms. Erbe?
Agreed, I think the conversations on Saturday went really well. I was most impressed at the openness. Everyone had to discuss the ideas and just come to agreement or not, not agree. But it was all done very, very civilly, very, you know, friendly. I did get a chance to speak to people who were not there. Although they were talking to people who were there, they themselves weren't there. So they, they did get some information, but they would also appreciate the opportunity to, for themselves to participate. So as we continue, some still had no idea what was occurring. So we can still try our best to reach out to more people, that'd be great, as best as we can.
Thank you. Ms. Smaller?
I will piggyback on that a little bit with a shift sort of on the conversation from Saturday. Again, was very pleasantly surprised at how open-minded and engaged everyone was who came. So a huge thank you to those members of the community who took the time on a snowy Saturday. I woke up and discovered it had snowed and didn't want to go, and I had to be there. So was incredibly grateful to everyone who showed up and went out of their way to take what ended up being about a four-hour part of their day to really dig into not just specifics, but ideas and visions and to share those kinds of things. And there was so much talk about, one of the common themes throughout all of it is that everyone has varying levels of specificity, but a vision for what they want Milford schools to look like and how they want them to be a part of our community and to continue being a part of our community and playing such a foundational role in who we are as a community, as a city, as a highlighted place in Connecticut and in the country as, as we build the vision of what life should be like for our kids and our families and our community here. And it was so beautifully timed, coming right at the start of our work now on the budget, where as we say over and over, the budget is numbers on paper, but those numbers represent the people and programs that are necessary to enact the vision that we as a board reflect from our community. And that's really what this comes down to, that we do have a responsibility to be fiscally responsible, but we have a lot more of a responsibility than just that. That we will do our due diligence, we will dig into this. There may be things we want to move, change, discuss along the way. There will definitely be questions, you know that. But this is the time of year that is the most exciting for me to be on this side of the table because we really have an opportunity to take the work that has been done for years and years and years and to continue, as Dr. Khatia said, advancing it forward regardless of what the numbers on the paper say. So we are going to do things that move that vision forward, that continue to bring to life the future that we believe our kids should have here in Milford. The reason, as we heard this weekend from so many folks, such as myself, who chose to move here for those reasons. And that we have the opportunity to continue to strengthen that pillar of our city, that pillar of our community. And having all of those voices this weekend just added to the importance of that opportunity and the importance of the work that we do with this budget here as one simple piece in that puzzle, but a very foundational piece that really does shape the rest of it. As much as the building shape what we can do with our kids going forward, this budget shapes what we can put in those buildings and what we can allow them to access and the opportunities they will have going forward. So I thought it was very well timed. I'm going to give everyone credit for doing that intentionally, for having that community conversation right before we jump into this because the two do go so hand in hand, so neatly and so clearly. And they really cover the full range of what our responsibilities are as board members. So we will be fiscally responsible, but we will not let go of that vision. And we will continue to move that forward through work on both of those parallel tracks.
Thank you. Mr. Koba?
I'll make a comment also on the community conversation, echoing in addition to what everybody else said. I was impressed by the cross-section of people that were in the rooms. And I looked at somebody, you know, somebody who had four children in the school system that moved to Milford because of, because of the school system, between elementary school and high school. And then there was another person who had no school-aged children. Both of them had the same equal commitment to making our system better. It was, it was really great to see that and get that feedback from the community, I thought, so.
Thank you, Mr. Koba. Anybody else? Okay, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Your second?
Second.
Yes, second.
Second.
Anyone object to adjournment at eight twenty-three? Then we are adjourned at eight twenty-three. That's being here, everyone.